We begin with the free prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Lord, as always, please grant us your guidance in all the decisions we make. Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, descendents, next we'll do the roll call, please.
Mr. Hope?
Here.
Mrs. DeSeyata?
Here.
Mr. Gogolsky?
Here.
Mr. Collins?
Here.
Mr. Entland?
Here.
Mr. Gershey?
Here.
Mr. Gambita?
Excused.
Mr. Ocklin?
Here.
Mr. Wood?
Here.
Attorney Ellis?
Is excused.
Dr. Barrett?
Here.
Dr. LaRosa?
Here.
Ms. Emmett is here. Mr. Gogorsky?
Here.
Mrs. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Pidgen?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Watson?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mrs. Fitzsimmons?
Here.
Ms. Deny?
Excused.
Dr. Shemansky?
Excused.
Mrs. Gregory?
Here.
Mrs. Liptak?
Excused.
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
And Mr. Black?
Here.
Mr. President, you have eight board members present.
Thank you, Ms. Emmett. We met briefly for executive session prior to the meeting this evening. And along with number five is approval of minutes from the Board Works Association on March 30th and the regular board meeting on April 6th. Motion for that, please.
I will move that we approve the minutes for those two dates.
Second. Mr. Gogolsky? All right, that motion was made by Mr. Gershey and seconded by Mr. Gogolsky. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no. Are there any abstentions? Motion carries. Motion for number six, the treasurer's reports.
I move to it, six of the treasurer's reports from the General Food Service and Student Activities Council.
And all second. That motion was made by Mr. Gogolsky and seconded by Mr. Wood. Are there any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? That motion carries. Number seven is approval of bills, the general account and food service account.
I move for the approval of bills from the general and food service accounts.
And all second. That motion was made by Mr. Gogolsky and seconded by Mr. Wood. Are there any questions or comments? Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Motion carries. Number eight is student recognition of the principal's list in the third marking period and senior recognition. Mr. Gogorsky, will you take care of that?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. This evening we'd like to recognize several outstanding individuals for their work narrowing the highest three-point averages on the high school during the third marking period. We'll start by recognizing our ninth grade students. Michaela Walton.
Michaela?
Yep.
Why don't you head up to Mr. Hope? There you go.
Also ninth grade, Leah Hartman. Our 10th grade students, Jacob Schott. And Rainey Carroll. Our 11th grade students, Kylie Mary. And Skylar Long. Finally, our 12th grade students, Rachel Tooman. And Kaylee Romanowski. I'd also like to mention that Kaylee was also voted second team all-state for basketball. That was just released last week, so congratulations to her. Congratulations to all the students on their tremendous work in the third marking period. And congratulations to the parents as well for your outstanding supports and efforts. Thank you very much. This evening we'd also like to recognize an outstanding senior. His name is Luke Urion. Luke is the son of Kevin and Donna Urion of Waymark. Luke?
All right. Hello, I know a lot of you actually, so that's pretty cool. But those of you I don't, hi, I'm Luke Urion, as introduced by Mr. Gogorsky. I live just outside of Waymark on the Rio Turnpike and I'll be studying biochemistry at Clifton this fall. While at Western Wayne, I've been a part of the marching band, video game club, the Scholastic Team, and I participated in the fire con. A younger me, who was a little more athletic, did football and basketball. And well, the memories that stuck with me for me to mention it, so I'd like to thank the board and everyone here for making that possible because that was all a really great experience. I also would like to think, thank because of... Sorry, I was expecting like ten of you, I'm a little bit. But I'd also like to bring up that we have a lot of electives here, shop classes, really everything to fit everyone's niche. And I think Western Wayne is a great school district because of that. And not only that, we have so many high-end math classes. I'm taking AP Calculus and AP Chemistry this year. Like just the high-end math is... Math is, yeah, that's a word. You can tell I'm a science and a math sort of student, not English, not my strong suit. But just all those classes in general, that's what really makes us a great school. And just the variety, you can't, I believe, you can't leave Western Wayne not being prepared for your future. Back to the list. I'd also like to thank my parents, Kevin and Donna Urion, for raising me to be so gosh darn hardworking and forcing me to take those honors and AP classes. I feel like they really pushed me to become a lot better of a person, stand up here and make a fool of himself. Swear, I read this over. And a big thanks to Ms. Masangai and Mr. McCaffrey for providing me with that, just that lab environment. They're my chemistry and physics teachers. I've had them for two years now and honestly, family away from family, home away from home. Parents can only direct me so much at home, at school, they're my number one. I, you know, if I'm feeling down, that's the class I go to. So they really uplift my spirits and I'd like to thank them for that. I don't really want to waste any more of your time and, you know, say nothing by stalling because that's really what I'm doing up here. Have a great night and thanks for the recognition.
Great job, Luke. Congratulations on your outstanding efforts. We appreciate it very much. Congratulations to your parents also. Outstanding and keep up the great work moving forward. If I could quickly also recognize our members of the FBLA. We had members placed in the top 10 at the state leadership conference, which was just recently held. We had several students, very successful. Multiple students finishing in the top two in the state for their accomplishments. Adrian Agnello in Weston Nugent placed second in Intro to Business presentation. Rainey Carroll was first in Intro to Parliamentary Procedure. Emily Romanowski was second place for Intro to Parliamentary Procedure. A team of Rachel Hope, Alex Chapman, Jenna Kwiatkowski, Alan McCarthy, and Kaylee Romanowski won first parliamentary procedure. Alay Tribeley, second place for public speaking. And Morgan Cocadrilli and Gavin Murphy, second place for their sales presentation. I'd also like to quickly recognize that their advisor, Teresa Lubash, was voted as outstanding advisor of the year in the state of Pennsylvania, which is a fantastic recognition for Teresa, who's been an advisor for several years and her accomplishments. And congratulations to that group and the group that, you know, qualified and can continue to compete in the national leadership competition. Thank you.
Thank you, Luke, and everyone else, and congratulations to everybody on the principal's list. Luke, I agree with you wholeheartedly on the varied curriculum that we offer. And we all realize that there isn't a one-size-fits-all and it's great to see guys like you taking advantage of the things that fit you the best. Congratulations and thank you. All right. Anything else along with our agenda? Oh, public, Harry, next is public recognition. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak?
Yes, actually. Bernice Fiorella. Mr. Hope, I have a question for you, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure.
Over the last year, the board had many opportunities to have decisions on cutting our taxes. But unfortunately, the board has us where we are. And I know you have been pushing a 3.4 increase, is that correct? But that's what you've wanted, right? And the board, thank God to Mr. Gogolsky, thank you for the 2.49 that the board will be voting on this evening. But I would like to remind the board that we are in the spot that we are in now because of the decisions that were made over the year. We could have decreased that budget in a number of areas. One would have been at the beginning of the school year, a religious exemption. But the board chose not to do that against the mask mandate. We also could have got rid of the illegal mask mandate, which could have decreased our charter school. Because I know 2.5 million is a big chunk for charter school. So my question for you, Mr. Hope, is the community keeps giving and giving. What is the board willing to commit to if we're committing to a tax increase? Is the board going to commit to no new hires for a year? Because we don't have the money. And I know with the SIR III fund coming, you were planning on hiring two more aides and a behavior specialist, which may be needed, but we don't have the money for that. Is the board willing to commit to no more curriculum for the year? So I just wanted to ask, what is the board willing to give? Since the community is willing.
And I can tell you, I'm very satisfied with the 2.49 that we talked about. That's great. And I always, it's always great when we can make that number low. And we want to make it, as you do, as low as possible. But we look at everything and we want to continue to offer these young people everything that they need and the varied curriculum. So I don't know if we, at this point, and I can't speak for all the board. I mean, I do speak for the board as in general, but not each individual. So everybody will make their own decision as to what we can change and make changes to over the next year. A lot of the costs that we have right now that we're trying to address are fixed costs, that contractual, our big, one of our biggest ones is the budget, which I think you were involved at that point. You know that we've, you know, we have, we have building increases that need to be covered. We already got a shortfall, so we are, we are underfunding our budget at these levels.
And I understand, but I would like to see the board make a commitment that there will be no new hires because SIR funds will take care of it for two years.
And I don't know if any of us will make that commitment if a new hire is required.
But they're never required. We are in a time where we have to make cutbacks. And unfortunately, the administration makes recommendations and the board just says, yes, yes, yes. I get it, I was there for eight years.
Within reason, we do rely on professionals that we have in place who make those recommendations to us.
But it's up to the board. And you're not here for the administration, you're here for the constituents.
Yes, we are.
So I just want to ask that the board start thinking for the next year that there has to be commitment on your side as well.
Thank you. And we do, we look at it, as you know, we look at it constantly.
Rick, I've been on the board for eight years.
Yeah, you know.
And I'm aware. But what I'm asking is we need to dig deeper. We can no longer have board members come to a meeting just looking at the agenda. We need deep, deeper dives. And that's all I'm asking from somebody who is so devoted to this community. We need to do better. And that's all I'm asking from the board tonight.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Yes. My name is Fay White. I'm 82 years old. I'd like to speak on behalf of the senior citizens of our area as far as the taxes are concerned. I can afford taxes. I went to college, I was a guidance counselor here at Western Wayne for 18 years and had a good contract and I appreciate it. But there are many in our community who cannot afford. I facilitate a group of senior citizens at my church, the Sunday of God in Hammond. And many of them, well, all of them are on fixed incomes. And I also facilitate a widows group in the community and the church. And some of them are really hurting financially. I know one of the ladies, she gets $1,000 a month in social security. I don't know how she lives. So I can afford it. And I know that the churches in our area, my church, they have food, food distributions, they have food panties, they have free clothing drives. So everybody is trying to help. And I know that the school district needs money to survive. And most of the senior citizens have paid and paid and paid for many years. But when you're on a fixed income, as many as all of them are, the budget is tight. And what I'm suggesting is that maybe if there has to be a raise in taxes, that the senior citizens could be exempt from that raise. Is that possible?
Actually, I'm not 100% sure if you can pick a demographic group and take them out of the tax rolls. And I don't think you can... So that's a legal question, our solicitor's not here, so I have to, you know, find that out definitively.
I think that would be a help.
Yes.
Everybody here has a budget that's probably taxed to the limits. And so, but senior citizens especially are difficult right now.
And I believe, Ms. Emmett, our farmstead, homestead, financial amount that we're getting this year from the state has gone up for the first time in a few years. We just found out about that recently. So that's going to, that's money that can come back to everyone, including potentially seniors, if they use that exclusion. So of course, yes. We feel for anybody that can't pay it. Our current, currently, our tax receivables are coming in and then, I want to say the 90th percentile are a little better. So people are doing very well. Not, and I know it's a struggle for many, but they're doing very well at getting their taxes in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes?
Corrette Staley, Lake Township.
I'm sorry, can I, I just see Rachel leaving and I forgot to mention, anybody that would like to go? Any students or families who don't, does not want to sit through our, the rest of the meeting here? You're welcome to leave. Sorry, I should have done that earlier, but you're welcome to stay. Sorry to interrupt you, ma'am. I just, I forgot to do that. And we don't like to hold the, especially students, longer than they want to be.
Corrette Staley, Lake Township. Forty years ago, my husband and I retired, but 40 years ago, we were going to buy a nice, large piece of property in Lake Township. We did that because we love the land. We hope to preserve that land after our death so that it's not built up into housing development. But frankly, these prices, these tax increases are absolutely sucking us dry. Not us specifically, but other people, as the other lady mentioned, if you're retired. We bought a nice, big piece of property and worked hard to be able to have that and to preserve it in Lake Township so there's not a housing development or a warehouse or whatever the heck else is going to be built up to preserve that property. Now, as the years go by, it is so hard to keep the property and continue to pay the taxes. Plus, we happen to have a lake on our property and a dam. We're killed by the DEP and all the regulations. We have to pay $1,500 a year just because we have a nice, safe dam on our property. So as Bernice mentioned, the board needs to really dive deep and look at all the factors that relate to the tax increase because it's not just that, it's everything.
And we do, we look at it consistently, and she knows.
Well, you need to hear the voices. You need to hear the voices of the people.
Absolutely.
And we represent other elderly people who can't come here and are just being killed with this tax increase.
And the district is not immune to price increases, like everyone is getting right now. Inflation affects us equally. So we're, so it ends up, it's always that, we're always wrestling with that, trying to figure out how to keep... And I think we've done a fantastic job over the last several years at keeping taxes increases.
But this one's, this one's a killer.
At a slow, steady pace. And this, this one's actually under what it should be to be funded where we, where we need to be.
As far as you can afford, it doesn't mean a lot of other people.
No, it doesn't.
So that's...
Absolutely. And they're, and we get that. We, we know people. I know people, people, as you know, come to us constantly and express the same concerns that you are. And we get it. But we also get that we have a job to do for the district too, so we're, we're always balancing that. Go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. I'm a senior citizen. I'm retired, my husband's retired. We're on fixed income. Yes, medications we have to buy. We have tax increase in the county, now we're going to have a school board tax increase. I want my kids, my great kids, to get good education. And I want you to look like I have to look. I have to budget. I have to cut things. I have to do without maybe some things that are pretty critical. I can't do without those medications, I can't do without food, and I have to keep a roof over my head. But there are other ways and other places that I have to look at. If I have to do it, everybody in this room has had to do it. And the school district is going to have to do it too because we just can't keep going this way. It's not just the senior citizens, it's everybody in here that has a job. How many moms have three or four kids in class? And they have to buy supplies at the beginning of the year that cost them $100 per kid? And it used to be that we paid the taxes and the kid got pencil on a tablet. We don't do that anymore. Their supply, the teachers are taking out of their own pockets to put supplies in. So someplace, there has to be something, somewhere, that you can cut that can help because everybody's paying it. And I'm not saying that I don't want the kids to have what they need. I do. I do. But everybody here has to live elsewhere.
Yes, thank you.
Can you state your name? I'm sorry. That's White, Lake Township. Jeanette? Yes. Thank you.
Let's, we'll work on this side, go ahead, ma'am. Thank you.
I'm Susan Van Leven and I've been, my family has been here forever. The land I'm living on right now is from my great-grand, my great-grandparents. They have, my grandparents put nine of their children through the school system here and paid school taxes. My dad and they, my mom and dad had seven of us. They lived on the same land as my grandparents and they paid school taxes. So now, they put 11 grandchildren have gone through the school system and my parents have paid school taxes. Now, they're paying school taxes for great-grandchildren and it's my mom now because my dad just recently passed away. Now, my mom, their monthly income has been cut in half. And my mother, ladies crying every night because she doesn't know how long she's going to be able to live here because she doesn't know if she's even going to be able to pay school taxes and real estate taxes because she doesn't have the money. Now, why? Why? My great-grandparents, my grandparents, they've all paid school taxes from the same land. Their mortgage has been paid and, and they live on the land, but still, they're paying school taxes and real estate taxes. And it's like, why? And these taxes, I think, I do believe that the school system should concentrate on the education of the children and not be worried about spending millions of dollars on new football fields and everything else. Because that's not important. When was the last time a Western Wayne School District graduate became a professional football player? Or a professional basketball player? We invest so much money in sports when really you should be investing on just mainly right now, the education as to when they get out of here, they're not going to be playing sports, they're going to be doing stuff, going to college to learn how to run a business and stuff. When I was a kid and I was in high school, they offered classes of general business, how you balance a checkbook. They gave you a package of like a monthly salary and they told you, okay, this is what you're going to be doing. This is your monthly, monthly salary. These are the bills you have to pay and this is how you have to learn to budget yourself. You have to learn to write a check. Do you know how many people don't even know how to write a check? Seriously? And, and in this area, there are so many widows right now. I can think of six just in the last two years. How are these women going to continue? They don't even get their husband's portion or the largest portion of the social security. They only get a part of it now. You know, how many of these senior citizens are going to bed and they're so depressed and worried about having a home and crying? And here we are, worried about paying millions of dollars on a football field or something else that really is not important in life. And that's, it may be important, it may be important to the school as an outlook. But I'm telling you, if it was that important, we would have more people going into football and basketball and becoming professionals if it was that important. The important thing here is people want to remain in their homes. We don't have a good income, we have a hard time paying taxes. And it's not our fault, it's because the jobs are horrible right now. And it's just not, it's not feasible to be happy than paying more taxes. We're paying more taxes with the federal government, with the state government. Every time you turn around, they're taxing something else.
And we can have some control over a small portion of that, but we're, and like I said, we're doing our best. Thank you, though. Is there anyone else? All right, we want to try to keep them kind of brief here because we're running out of time.
My name is Linda Herman. I'm two, I'm a senior citizen.
Thank you.
I've been here before, it got nowhere. I agree with her that we are not the Pittsburgh Steelers. We did not need a $2 million improvement on the football spending. It's a waste of taxpayers' money and we don't get anything to say about it. I pulled up statistics tonight and for Wayne County, for 2022, the average income of a Wayne County resident is $24,132 a year. Now, you people have a responsibility to do a per capita median income study and accordingly, run your school business as what people can afford. You can't keep taking from people that don't have it to give. And so where are we all supposed to get this money? You can't even sell a house. Right now, a realtor told me I have to take a $100,000 hit because of the taxes here because my taxes are equal to that of a doctor and lawyer that could pay that, that kind of an income. No doctor or lawyer wants to move here. So you're, you're hurting us in many financial aspects. What, when do you people sit up and say, now, hey, wait a minute? We're voted, we have an obligation to citizens that live here to do the right thing by them? It's not all about kids. These kids don't work and pay the taxes. We adults have to pay these taxes. There has to be a limit. And with $24,132 as the average median income in this county, with an unemployment rate down 0.8, 0.3%, okay? Well, 8.3%, I should say. Well, the national unemployment is down 6%. Where are you going with this? And she's right, they're right. You need to cut within your budgets on your very frivolous spending. You want us to look like...
Ma'am, 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 we're not, we're not... Ma'am, ma'am, we're we're not, we're not frivolous, we're not. You, we we do take a very careful look at everything we spend on, so that's.
Two million dollars on a football spending?
It may not be important to you and and.
It's not important, as far as an education is concerned, no, but it makes you look good. You want to look like this is a Rockefeller's brand neighborhood. This this isn't a wealthy area, this is an average.
We we know, we all live here, we we know, we know.
No, you make more, I'll I'll bet you make more than twenty-four thousand U S board members each get.
If I may interject here, I I think a lot of this aggression and anger is misdirected at the board, because these are volunteers that are here to do a job, that, yes, they were voted into their positions, but they do take a hard look at all of these situations, and they they do look at, being conservative. Uh, we've been taxing well under the index, uh, the past five years, at the very least, that we were allowed to go to. Uh, we've tried to be on the conservative side in in terms of raising taxes, because they are, this group is very conscious of that. They realize that there are people struggling. Um, it it, I think there's a bigger picture here that a lot of us are missing when we're forced to make decisions that are out of our control a lot of times, such as raising taxes to provide the consistent education for our students. The state used to fund approximately fifty percent of the school's budget. That's currently down to about thirty percent. Twenty percent is a huge number when it comes to what the local taxpayers now are forced to to make up the difference when it wasn't state-funded.
Why can't you, like in other districts, like in Toby Hall, they fired, they laid off teachers? They didn't have it, the taxpayers didn't have it?
As our student numbers have decreased over the last ten years, we we've decreased the amount of staff by over thirty, between thirty and thirty-five staff members over that time. That's sort of ten percent of our workforce.
Well, maybe it needs to keep going.
And we do that every year, and every year we analyze what we're looking, where we, where can we potentially not rehire, if necessary, based on student numbers, uh, need, with special education, with mental health? It's it's a fine balance. But these people up here do a pretty darn good job of analyzing this and making the right decision that they feel is best in the interest of the community. So please, I I I think it's a little misguided to just bash the people up here for their decisions.
Emmett, nobody up here makes twenty-four thousand dollars a year.
We're not arguing with that, and we understand.
No, you can afford what you're doing, but the average person can't.
As many of you can tonight, that you just said.
Excuse me?
Many of you said you can afford those taxes as well.
Many can't, we're senior citizens, even young folks can't make it.
But again, there's a bigger picture here, but I think there there are many layers to that are, again, out of our control, but we're forced to make the difficult decisions. So I just ask for your understanding and appreciation for what these people have to do up here, day in and day out, as volunteers, as volunteers.
And the short answer is, we do, and we will, and we do continually look at at the budget as it's presented. And we, if there's, and we've done it numerous times, where where we have an option not to rehire or to shuffle professionals around so we don't have to fill a position, we do that. And we, and, uh, the, Ms. Emmett does a great job shopping for all of our needs for the buildings and for lunches and everything, and we we put everything out to bid. We we try to, I mean, we do manage, try to manage things as closely as possible while providing our staff and our students the stuff, I don't think that they need to succeed.
You you said that you take in mind that there are exclusions from the county. It's only two hundred and fifty dollars, that's all you get. You're increasing us thousands of a house, properties.
Oh, the.
I know, I just, between, I I just saw what's going on, and it's based on the value of your house, so.
And the average.
Those of us that have larger properties, farm properties, I mean.
The the average increase per household is approximately, what, a cent at this point?
It's about, it would be about sixty dollars for every hundred thousand of assessed value on property.
Sixty, then how come it goes up thousands? If you're, you said this the last time, a couple of years.
It never, it never goes up thousands.
I think that's.
Unless unless you have a property that's very, very valuable.
No, well, it's just an average house.
All right, we're gonna, thank you, thank you, Olive, we appreciate your input. Does anyone have anything, oh, go ahead, Ms. Ransley.
I'll say one thing. I feel all your pain. Tonight, we're going to prove the the use of Evergreen School for the county commissioners to try to explain why they feel they need to raise our assessment so high, which in turn drives the vote for our tax values. So I would suggest that you all show up, May tenth, at seven P M. at Evergreen School, and give them the, your same displeasure as you have given us tonight.
Absolutely.
And I and I spoke to our commissioners also, and up, they are, the reassessment, as that happens, they readjust the millage, and then they end up readjusting, our millage gets readjusted as well. So that first document that you've gotten from the county that shows what your new assessment isn't necessarily what it's going to be in taxes. The way it was explained to me, if your property hasn't improved or hasn't gone up in value over eighty percent, so if your hundred thousand dollar home hasn't gone to a hundred and eighty thousand, you're likely not to see an increase at the county level. And at the school level, we're limited, we can only go to the maximum of what the index is allowed every year. This year it's three point four, and potentially, we're going to be at up two point four nine. So we're we're almost a full percent under the maximum we could go, even though we really do need the maximum to, and we're still going to have a deficit at that point. So again, we are, we're mindful of it, and we're trying to keep it as low as possible. We found over the years, if you look statistically and look back historically, slow and steady wins the race. So if we can keep these at a small and the most modest possible to keep things moving and keep doing them incrementally, that's, that appears at this point to be the best way to do it. So, anyway, okay, we're gonna move on. Is there anybody else that has anything?
I'd just like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. President.
Mr. Gershey. Uh, I was going to mention the situation with the state funding, and I'm glad the superintendent brought it up. Uh, I was going to, I, all of you have valid concerns and comments, and we certainly are listening to them. Uh, I would suggest, in addition to commissioners, that you contact your state legislators, because if you've read the papers over the past several months or actually years, uh, there are often articles about unfair funding, the way these, the state distributes money to the five hundred school districts. So, uh, they are another place, as as the superintendent said, they used to fund fifty percent, announced down to thirty. They need to be contacted by taxpayers and asked about their their funding policies and what they should be doing. So write to your state legislators.
Anyone else on the board? Okay, if there's, go ahead, go ahead.
Myself and my daughter both have something to say.
Right.
Um, most of you guys know me, I'm Vicky Palazzo. If you guys don't know me, it's because I haven't been here since you guys were elected. I stopped coming when it was very clear that the parents' voices were not being heard. I stopped coming when it was very clear that what we had to say about your guys' policies and what you guys wanted to do wasn't in line with what we wanted to do. So I wrote something. Um, because it's been brought to my attention that you guys' vote tonight is to raise the taxes.
I'm sorry, not not to cut you off, or, but we do need to move on with the remainder of the agenda. Can we just keep it to a few minutes, please?
Absolutely, I'll I'll make it really quick. Um, Mrs. Heinz brought a petition to you guys in the beginning of the school year, and you guys thought we were bluffing, you guys have lacked on every front that once made Western Wayne an amazing school district, and we sit here tonight about to be punished by the board for ra, by raising our taxes. I've heard a couple of different numbers, I get you guys have to raise your taxes, but I think it should be at the very minimum possible, because you guys, your policies and your decisions over this year has put us in the position that we're in. Right now, my four children go to charter school. They are happier and healthier and more educated than they have been in years, and that is by far a good thing. I'm gonna tell you guys, the more you guys raise the taxes, the more you guys are gonna foot the bill for more families going to charter school. Um, it will become my personal mission to make sure that every Western Wayne family knows that if they want a good, stable education without all of the tax increases, because I'm I'm actually quite upset that, I get the taxes have to happen, but we we spoke, we told you guys what we were feeling, it didn't matter. So now that you guys have this mass exodus of students leaving, you guys are like, oh, we have to make up the difference, because you guys have to foot the bill. I've already signed my intent to return for next year, I know several families that have done the same thing. My daughter has something to say that I think is important, so I'm gonna let her speak. Um, Dr. Barrett, I do have something to say to you personally. You have overstepped in the last year and superseded your authority on all fronts, some dealings with this board. I've personally researched your role in superintendent and board runnings after I've watched you consistently hijack and row row at the meetings and the parents' voices. You are an extra member of this for voting purposes. Your job is to report and observe back to the board what is needed for the district to run successfully. You answer to the board, not for it, and I'm glad to see that you've kind of taken a backseat this time. But I I'm not impressed, we don't co-parent with you guys, and if you won't listen to these families, be prepared to lose them. Shame on you for voting for such a high tax raise to recoup the cost of your mistakes out of our pockets. Go ahead.
Hello, um, my name is Samantha Paul. If you guys don't remember, I spoke at one of the first board meetings of this year. Um, I'm an eighth grade honors student, and I started going to charter school in January. Um, me and my siblings and I are thoroughly enjoying charter school, because we are getting a better education, and education better than we have in years. At Western Wayne, I, me and both my siblings, all of my siblings, I have asked them, felt very unwelcome. On the first day of school, we all tried coming with, in without a mask, and we were denied an education. We were separated from everyone else and told to go home. And here we are, right now, without masks, with very minimal cases of COVID. One topic that I would use as as an example to what this school needs to fix is bullying. This school district lets bullying go unchecked. For example, I will not use names, but one student had been messing with me and my friend for quite a while. We had both told the teacher, asked him to stop, and had him to say. But the only action that was taken was the office talking to him and making him apologize. After this, the bullying continued. The student would speak to the females in class with such vulgar language that they would get very uncomfortable, but still no action was taken. To this day, the student is still bullying my friend, and nothing she does stops him. The school needs to stop treating students like criminals, make sure they feel happy and comfortable and safe here. At this charter school, there is no bullying, and when there is, it's taken care of immediately. Imagine how you would feel if you were going to school and the school board wouldn't listen or even consider the feelings of the parents in here, who have voiced their opinions multiple different times. These parents have been coming to try to make a difference, to make the school better, but no action has been taken. Therefore, if you are not willing to change, why would you expect anyone to step? This leads me into my next topic for tonight, which is education. Western Wayne's education cannot be compared to to this charter schools. My siblings and I have all come leaps and bounds when it comes to this topic. We are thriving and enjoying schools, school, which is what schools should be allowing students to do. Out here at Western Wayne, the students barely know any of the teachers, and the teachers don't know the students. All the teachers know is how much these students participate and how much work they turn in. You are here tonight wondering why you have lost so much money sending kids out of school. If you don't know why, you should go look at the number of, the amount of kids who were here at the beginning of the year compared to how many kids are here now. If you don't understand why there is a substantial loss of students at this school, then maybe you should go through and think of all of the complaints that these parents and students have brought to your attention at this board meetings that you have disregarded and ignored. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for speaking, you have a great job, and I'm I'm pleased to see you be able to tell us your story. And thank you, Mrs. Palazzo. Is there anyone else that has anything?
I I was going to say something, but for the sake of time, I would just ask that, I have something that I was hoping to show the board, anybody else in the audience that wanted to see it? Um, I won't hold up the meeting, I know you're trying to keep things, but I have something I think is good news.
Okay.
Okay, afterwards, if anybody's interested.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Okay, and it's, okay, let's move forward. We're going to do a block motion tonight and vote on numbers eleven through forty-four. We're going to withhold number eighteen through twenty-one. A motion for that block vote, please.
I make the motion for that consent block.
I'll second it. All right, a motion was made by Mr. Gershey and seconded by Mr. Wood. Is there any further conversation? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Block consent vote carries. Number one to number eighteen, the election of the board treasurer. Do we have any nominations for the board treasurer?
I'd like to nominate Jeff Gogolski for board treasurer.
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Collins and seconded by Mrs. De Seattle. Are there any other nominations for board treasurer? Okay, we'll vote on that then. All in favor of Mr. Gogolski as our board treasurer, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Congratulations, Mr. Gogolski, for retaining your position and doing a great job as our board treasurer. Number nineteen is the board treasurer's salary. I have a motion for that one, please.
I recommend that the Board of Education approve the amount of three thousand dollars for the board treasurer's salary for the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year.
I'm going to second that. The motion was made by Mrs. De Seattle and seconded by myself. Is there any conversation on that one? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Okay, that motion carries. Number one to number twenty. Uh, motion for the board treasurer's bond.
I move that the Board of Education approve the public official treasurer's bond at twenty-five thousand for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year at an estimated cost of two hundred and fifty dollars.
I'll second it.
Okay, that motion was made by Mr. Wood and seconded by Mr. Gershey. Is there any further discussion on that one? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed by saying no? Are there any abstentions? Yeah, motion carries. And finally, we'll do number twenty-one, the donation of the board treasurer's salary.
I move that the Board of Education approve the donation of the board treasurer's salary in the amount of two hundred and fifty dollars to Kids Peace, five hundred dollars to F B L A, five hundred dollars to Lake Ariel Volunteer Fire Company, five hundred dollars to Waymark Volunteer Fire Company, five hundred dollars to Hamlin Fire and Rescue, two hundred and fifty dollars to Unified Trap Program, and five hundred dollars to Western Wayne Baseball.
I'll second that.
All right, that motion was made by Mr. Gogolski and seconded by Mrs. De Seattle. Anyone, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Anyone opposed by saying no? Any abstentions? And that one carries as well. Now we move forward to number forty-five on our agenda, which is informational items. We need all the data for our reading. You can move on. All right, you'll have. Okay, so those, all the dates, there are a lot of dates coming up here in May, they're all listed on the website. And they're also on our agenda tonight. Graduation, yeah, that's great, Mrs. De Seattle, graduation has moved from June ninth to June tenth. Is that correct? Friday instead of Thursday.
As well as the last student day is like.
All right, is there any correspondence?
No.
Assistant superintendent's report, we looked at assistant superintendent's principals' report. Uh, is there any federal programs?
Just one note, Mr. President, the district completed the federal monitoring audit this week, so we would like to recognize and thank Carrie Fitzsimmons, Rose Emmett, Mary Malik, Melissa Daniels, and Kelly Vinton for all of their hard work, not just on that audit, but of with the federal programs throughout the year, so thank you.
Thank you. All right, future meetings on June first, six P M.